Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors regular meeting for August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We will call this meeting in order and report out in closed session from our last meeting.
Report out from July twenty-third. Item one, pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine D two, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation, board action, no reportable action taken. Closed session for today, August thirteenth. Item one, pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine D one, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation, Green versus County Workers Compensation Appeals Board Case Number A D J one three five four one four one eight. Item two, pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine D two, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Item three, pursuant to government code five four nine five six point eight, conference with real property negotiator Marcos Munoz, re potential purchase price and terms of payment for A P N zero one zero zero one zero R O W. Negotiating party, California Department of Transportation, Charles T. McKinney. Item four, pursuant to government code five four nine five seven point six, conference with county designated labor negotiators Teresa Hitchcock, Marcos Munoz, and Judy Hawkins regarding the following employee organization, Service Employees International Union Local one zero two one.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on these items? Is there any public comment online?
There is no online public comment.
Very well, we will adjourn to closed session. We will return at nine o'clock sharp for the swearing. Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors regular scheduled meeting for August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. If you are able, please raise your allegiance. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Righteous. All right, we're gonna move on to regular agenda. Item number one, Madam Clerk.
Item, regular agenda item one, item five, resolution, human resources, appoint under Sheriff Rochelle Whiting to fulfill the remaining term of the vacant position of Calaveras County Sheriff.
Judy?
Good morning, Chair Vermandy, members of the board, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. And I am here today to bring before the board the options for to appoint and swear in under Sheriff Rochelle Whiting to fill the remaining term of the vacant sheriff position or give staff direction. So, of course, our sheriff, Rick Di Basilio, has retired. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And he has made recommendations to staff that his successor be under Sheriff Whiting. And so we have brought these recommendations to the board. Now, per government code twenty-five three zero four, the board does have the ability to appoint the sheriff to fulfill the time left. They can direct staff to do an internal recruitment and public interviews, or they can direct staff to do external, an external recruitment and do public interviews. And so this is, this is the staff or the directions that we need from the board. And I will say that under Sheriff Whiting has been very good to work with. She is the example that we try to show everybody here in Calaveras County. She graduated from Calaveras High School. She went off to college, she came, or university, she came back and then started working for the county. She has made many accomplishments as we have laid out in the staff report. And one of them, or several of them, is she has been the first female lieutenant in the county. She has been the first female captain, and now the first female under sheriff. And if the board so directs, she will be our first female sheriff, which is awesome accomplishment. So, can I answer any questions?
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, we will go. Is there any public comment on this item? Is there any public comment online?
There is no public comment online.
This is gonna mean have to. Very well, then I will bring it back to the board for a motion.
I will move this item, Mr. Chair, proudly. I will proudly second this motion.
Any other comments before we cast a vote? Very well, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carries five zero. Congratulations. You have not been sworn in yet, so I can't call you sheriff. But we will do that in a minute. Would you like to make your stand?
Yes, I would, sir.
Please.
After twenty-four years serving our sheriff's office, I was hoping that this board, our community, our agency partners, and especially my coworkers know my commitment to Calaveras County by now. I think my career track record speaks for itself. Not that I have to convince the board now, but I did want to say that I have my bachelor's degree in business management, a graduate certificate in criminal justice, and I'm close to obtaining my master's degree in public safety. And the reason I bring this up is because I have been so impressed and inspired by members of our sheriff's office all the way through the ranks up to captain that have been seeking higher education and better themselves in addition to their dedicated work at the sheriff's office. It speaks to our commitment to pursuing opportunities that we will continue our personal and professional development. I believe the complexities of twenty-first century policing demand educated, professional law enforcement leaders, and collectively, we are here to fill that role. I am fifth generation Calaveras County. My parents are here today. My adult kid, who also graduated, from Calaveras High School is here. As with many other of our sheriff's office employees, my husband and I understand the intricacies of raising a child in rural county and worrying about transportation, childcare, and safety in our schools. School safety is a high priority for me. I understand the necessity, and I am committed to ensuring the level of professionalism and the level of trust that you have come to expect from the Calaveras County Sheriff's Office. I believe in upholding the constitutional rights of our citizens. Our sheriff's office paramount objective is the protection of our communities and the public safety in Calaveras County. With my appointment, that will not change. We have a reputation for managing a clean adult detention facility, and I will ensure focus on valuing the efficiency of the jail and court security operations. We recognize that this community holds us to the highest standards of conduct, and I take the expectation of accountability and transparency serious. We will continue our existing programs and expand on engagement opportunities for community dialogue in how we are doing and what we can do better at the sheriff's office. I have been working alongside Sheriff Di Basilio as his second-in-command since October of two thousand and twenty-two. We have had a strong succession plan in place for uninterrupted continuity of operations at the sheriff's office. Through recent budget cycles, I have shown this board how I can work cooperatively and collaboratively with county administration and other department heads making hard but fiscally sound decisions without reducing programs or affecting operations at the sheriff's office. That's thanks to the professional and highly experienced command staff that I work cohesively with, that is led by Captains Ballard, Sturm, Belagus, and the rest of the sheriff's administrators. Rick Di Basilio leaves some big cowboy boot-sized shoes to fill with the expectation of how a sheriff should be in a community, and I will uphold that standard. My goal is to maintain a culture at the sheriff's office focused on our core values and recruiting and retaining the best for Calaveras County. And although I am truly humbled by the showing of support here today, the sheriff is just one person. The Calaveras County Sheriff's Office is full of dedicated, self-sacrificing individuals with huge servant hearts focused on our community. And I'm so proud to be part of and to continue to have the opportunity to lead this team. I'm very willing and capable of taking on the role of the sheriff. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak about it.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite the county clerk of the board, county clerk, to come up and swear you in. And you may bring up whomever you would like. Thank you.
Just saying, I'm having to see the one that's already on stage. In fact, naturally, you're over the line.
About clapping as well?
No.
I say your name.
I, Rochelle Whiting.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith.
That I bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. Yeah, I'll definitely sign that.
Without reservation?
Our purpose of evasion. Thank you very much, Madam Sheriff. Awesome. All right, that was pretty cool. Okay, if, let it be cleared out. You can stick around. We got everybody here.
Yeah, I think you guys made a fantastic choice in Rochelle. She's gonna do a fabulous job for the, for the county. I couldn't be more proud to have recommended her, and I know that you guys are gonna be very happy with the way she runs the sheriff's office. So, thank you.
Very well, let's continue on with our agenda. Staff announcements.
Staff announcements, this is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Probably the real reason everyone came today, but hard to follow that. September twenty-first, ten a.m. to two p.m. here at the government campus, we're gonna have Emergency Preparedness Day with H H S A, Public Health, American Red Cross, all sorts of other folks. Please come out and involve yourselves in the day, help prepare your homes and your families for inevitable disasters. So, we're happy to host it.
Thank you. The other staff announcements in the room. Are there any online?
We have none online.
Very well, thank you very much. We will move on to recognitions and acknowledgements. Item six.
Item six, proclamation. Clerk of the Board of Supervisors adopt a proclamation honoring Rick Di Basilio for his twenty-one years of service to the Calaveras County Sheriff's Office and residents of the Calaveras County and congratulating him on his retirement.
Very much. I will pass the gavel to Supervisor Toffenelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rick, that's pretty hard to follow, but we'll, we'll see what we can do here for you. You know, there's, there's a new sheriff in town now.
Rick, I don't see you wearing a cowboy hat or cowboy boots.
All right, this proclamation honoring Rick Di Basilio for his twenty-one years of service to the Calaveras County Sheriff's Office and residents of Calaveras County. Whereas, we are here today to express our appreciation of Rick Di Basilio and honor him for his distinguished twenty-one-year career with Calaveras County Sheriff's Office. And whereas, Rick Di Basilio joined the Calaveras County Sheriff's Office on September thirtieth, two thousand and oh-two, and at the age of forty-three, he successfully completed the Ray Simon or Simone?
Ray Simon.
Simon Criminal Justice Training Center Police Academy, becoming a deputy sheriff one. And whereas, Rick Di Basilio worked a variety of assignments within the sheriff's office in different ranks, including deputy sheriff two, school resource officer, field training officer, a detective, SWAT team member, bike team member. He actually rode a bike with cowboy boots and everything.
Little cowboy boots.
A senior deputy sergeant, and upon his appointment in two thousand and sixteen and subsequent elections as sheriff. And whereas, throughout his law enforcement career, Rick has performed admirer of tasks important to the success of the organization, including prioritizing staff retention, strengthening special team capabilities, increasing employee training opportunities, and acquiring new equipment and technology for the sheriff's office through A B four forty-three.
Your favorite.
And whereas, Rick Di Basilio has received numerous accolades, awards, commendations, and recognitions throughout his career, including a gold medal in the Western States Police Olympics. Wow. And whereas, Rick Di Basilio served the county of Calaveras and the Calaveras County Sheriff's Office in a professional, dedicated, and loyal manner. And whereas, Sheriff Rick self-proclaimed on numerous occasions to just be the pretty face of the sheriff's office, while he focused on giving recognition to staff's accomplishments and always following the sheriff's office motto of putting our community first. Are there any staff, or is there any board member comments?
We might have found a prettier face, Rick. I believe you have.
I will just add to the, to the resolution. Thank you very much, Rick. You've been a wonderful partner for this board to work with. We've built a strong budget process and a, and a good culture between your department and the board, and I just really want to thank you for your leadership, and I'll miss having breakfast with you.
Yeah, it's because I was always paying.
Come on, we go back.
We did, we did.
May I say one more thing? You know, it's, it's, you know, your time as sheriff, Rick, you, you know, your engagement with the community and the way, the way you engage people so well, you know, you really changed the face of the sheriff in Calaveras County. And I want to thank you for that, you know. You, you, you've built the respect for the people of Calaveras County because of your actions. Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there any public comments?
For me and Mom, Rick, God bless. Congratulations on your retirement. Well deserved. We will miss you.
Thank you, Terry. Tell Mom I said hi, and I'll miss flying with her.
So, when I first met Rick, we were across the table from one another bargaining. And so when I first started in two thousand and fifteen, we were bargaining the contracts. Rick was always respectful. He was good to work with. I knew that when I had talked with other colleagues in other counties, they told me how hard D S A was going to be to, to work with, and Rick worked great, so we could try to come to a common goal. When he became sheriff, he worked closely with the H R department, so we could tackle and address recruitment issues, how we could do things better. And he was a great partner, and I wish you a wonderful retirement.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? None in the room? Okay, is there any online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board then. Is there any other comments, or do I have a motion?
So moved. I'll second.
Motion and second. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Well, Rick, is the final five oh vote you get. Do you have a speech?
I don't have a speech, but I just, I would like to say, for most people that do or don't know, I moved into the county in nineteen seventy-eight. It's been a beautiful county. I've raised my family up there, took a little bit of a hiatus back to the valley, but always came back. It's just been a wonderful experience working at the sheriff's office and working with all the staff in the county, the fire chiefs, the C H P. Just, everybody has been phenomenal to work with. I don't know what to say. I just, I'm very humbled by the respect that has been shown to the sheriff's office and to me, and I hope and I know that Rochelle will continue that legacy within the county. I wish her all the best of luck and the county the best of luck. Thank you very much for everything you folks have done for me.
Thank you, Rick. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors wishes to express its gratitude and appreciation to Sheriff Di Basilio for his many years of dedicated service to the department and the safety of the community, and congratulate him on his well-earned retirement, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors, Calaveras County, State of California, this thirteenth day of August, two thousand and twenty-four. And that makes it final, Rick. Enjoy your retirement. Enjoy it very much.
Thank you.
We'll mail it to you.
Do you want to stand in front of the screen and take a picture?
The Photoshop men using A I.
There you go.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Supervisor Toffenelli. We'll move on to item number seven.
Item seven, proclamation. Clerk of the Board of Supervisors adopt a proclamation recognizing August, two thousand and twenty-four as Child Support Awareness Month in Calaveras County.
I'll pass the gavel to Supervisor Hubbard.
Thank you, Chair. I don't see Julie and Kim here yet, so I'll just go ahead and read it. Whereas, the vision of the Central Sierra Child Support Agency is partnering with families to create self-sufficiency. And whereas, the professional staff of the Central Sierra Child Support Agency worked diligently to fulfill this vision by partnering with families involved in more than four thousand four hundred cases and collecting nearly eleven million dollars in support last federal fiscal year. And whereas, the Central Sierra Child Support Agency declares its commitment to having a meaningful impact on the families it serves. And whereas, the Central Sierra Child Support Agency is engaged in educating its customers regarding their cases and the community regarding the services it provides. And whereas, the Central Sierra Child Support Agency affirms the important role it plays in partnering with parents to support the well-being of children. And whereas, the Central Sierra Child Support Agency encourages parents to be accountable for their children, providing them with many opportunities to succeed. And whereas, the Child Support Awareness Month recognizes and acknowledges parents who work diligently to support their children to provide both emotional and fiscal responsibility. And whereas, the Central Sierra Child Support Agency thanks its partner agencies and recognizes its child support professionals who strive to continuously improve their customer service and now make a difference in the lives of the children in our community. And with that, is there any public comment? Any comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you. I'll bring you back to the board.
Yep, I could say a few words. I've been on this Child Support Agency board for, geez, I don't know, many, many, many years. It's a well-run organization. It's one of the better-run organizations that we're committed to, and it does very well. It gets accolades from the state. I think we're like, we, the last meeting we had, we were talking about updates, and I think we were like third in the state of California as far as the services we provide and for the families. And it's just a great organization, and I hope it continues to be that way, because it does a lot to the community. It does a lot for the kids. It does a lot for the parents, because it's very difficult for children when families break up. And they, they, it's just, they're there in support, along with a lot of, a lot of other things they do is obtaining child support for the spouses that have the children. So, it is a very well-run organization.
Thank you. Any other comments? I actually would like to say something. I want to thank, first of all, Supervisor Toffenelli for, for putting me forth as chairman of this board for the C S C S A. And I really appreciate the work that, that they do. One of the major advantages of being in this position is actually getting to do things that you know nothing about. And I just want to reiterate to, to your point of, of the good work that they do and how amazing the organization is. So, there, with that, now therefore be it resolved in order that the Board of Supervisors. What's somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move this item. Second. Thank you. Everybody?
Aye.
Thank you. Did a good job of that one. Now therefore be it resolved in order that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, State of California, does hereby designate the month of August, two thousand and twenty-four to be declared Child Support Awareness Month in Calaveras County, and applauds the Central Sierra Child Support Agency for its continued service to the families throughout our community. Thank you. I know that Julie and Kim were trying to make it here. They're at Amador, and they'll be here, but so we'll give this to them later.
Sounds great. Very well, we'll move on to general public comments. Madam Clerk?
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the thirty minutes allotted time, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of items of comments to be heard.
Thank you. I think everybody here knows the drill. There'll be a, a green light, yellow light, red light at three minutes. I'll cut you off. If you, if you're speaking about something that's on the agenda later, consent or otherwise, I will ask you to hold those comments till we hear that agenda item. I will ask you to hold those comments till we hear that agenda item. Um, and we will have a public comment on the consent items, uh, coming up next. So with that, no further ado, Terry, lead us off.
Good morning. Terry McBride, New California State Committee Chair and Senator. I wanted to show you this constitution. They're all the same. I love this constitution. I hope you guys read it regularly. Um, I give this to children. And I tell them, do you know who the hero is? They go, no, who? And I say, you, when you stand up for your constitutional rights. And the parents all agree. So I just want you to think about, I have these. If you'd like somehow, I'd buy them and give them out to the school. Cause I pay for these out of my deep pockets that I don't have. I brought this before. I want you guys to think about this because some call it radical. But we did it for how long? And, um, look at what's going on. Remember, we are not a democracy. We are a constitutional republic. With a democracy, we're having some issues. Um, first I want to share real quick news with you. That is, we've been to Congress. We are in negotiations with Congress. Uh, we're going back to Congress. They're very interesting. You want to know why they're so very, and I want you to look at West Virginia and the history of it. How it came into being, the restored government, be between the lines there. And how West Virginia came into being and how it's all constitutional, which is exactly what we're doing. So we're already visiting with Congress and they're listening. You know why? Because of the finances. Are you aware California cannot go bankrupt by law? Cause of course they've done it a couple of times. They cannot go bankrupt, but what they can do is force counties to go bankrupt. They can force cities to go bankrupt. They can force county, uh, schools to go bankrupt. To save their ass. Pardon my French, but that's basically what they're doing. They're clawing back the funds. I imagine their nasty little fingers have been into some of our money too. This is our money, you guys. We all pay the taxes. So I want you to think about that. I want you to think about the fact that going back to this helps take care of this little democracy issue and reminds everybody that we are a constitutional republic. The doctrine of the lesser magistrate gives you that power. Do you know what else it does? It gives you that responsibility and that duty. And if you don't, then you violated it. And that's part of your oath. To stand up for the county, to stand out for its citizens, to stand up frankly for our country. Because what our forefathers wanted was local government. That's the counties. It comes to the counties. The counties have more control as they should. And that's what we want to see. So I'm asking you to strongly consider, cause you do in fact have the power. I don't care what the great witch called the, uh, California state says. You have the power to go back to ID required, one-day voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Chris?
Good morning. My name is Christopher Bednar, publisher of Calaveras2024Election.com. My comments today are directed to you, District Four Supervisor Folandorf. Supervisor Folandorf, by now you are quite aware that I have made a very serious allegation of public corruption against you with criminal implications inasmuch as you've allegedly committed serial fraud and perjury by repeatedly filing false California Fair Political Practices Commission forms spanning more than four years of the required reporting period for these filings. Supervisor Folandorf, I allege that you have repeatedly submitted blatantly erroneous and misleading FPPC Form 460s for the Folandorf for D4 County Supervisor 2020 and Folandorf for D4 County Supervisor 2024 campaign committees of which you were also the treasurer, creating a perception of conflict or fraud for an elected official with voting power on a $360 million county budget for fiscal year 2024-25. That is a considerable amount of power in the hands of an elected official allegedly one having committed serial fraud and perjury by their blatantly erroneous campaign finance filings over a period of four years. Supervisor Folandorf, I allege that you filed yet another erroneous and misleading campaign finance form, FPPC 460 on July 31st, 2024, also constituting fraud and perjury stemming from your longstanding failure to properly account for two campaign contributions received in 2020 from SEIU 1021 and YUNA 73 for $15,000 and $1,500 respectively, before half of those funds vanished without being accounted for and remain conspicuously absent from all of your subsequent FPPC filings. Supervisor Folandorf, you stand accused by me of having allegedly stolen $8,454.72 in labor union campaign contributions to your Folandorf for D4 County Supervisor 2020 Committee. I call upon you to publicly refute those serious allegations. The most credible way in which you may satisfactorily do so is by publicly requesting a forensic audit of your 2020 and 2024 candidate committee FPPC Form 460s. If you believe that you have nothing to hide and will be absolved, you'll promptly issue a public statement requesting the Calaveras County Auditor Controller's Office immediately conduct that forensic audit. Your silence will resoundingly indicate otherwise and prompt vocal calls for your immediate resignation as District Four Supervisor. You will recall that I advised you, speaking from this podium during general public comments on July 9th, 2024, of an FPPC complaint that filed against you on July 8th, 2024. My name is Christopher Bednar, publisher of Calaveras2024Election.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very well.
Good morning. Mary Beth Ospital, Director of Brandon Outreach for Cow Waste. Ever since I've been here to present this, but quarterly I used to come and present the recycle reimbursement check that goes back to the county along with franchise fee. Um, and so today I'm here with that. Um, so for the last three quarters, um, your recycle reimbursement check is $53,000 that goes back to the county, which is fabulous. Um, I, I would just like to mention, we get lots of calls for parks and cemeteries that need receptacles. And so I highly encourage you to maybe use some of this money. This money that goes back to the county comes from the constituents in your districts that choose to recycle. So, um, again, I highly encourage you to take this money and put it back into education, outreach, whatever that may be. Um, the franchise fee check that also came in last week was over $51,000. So it's over $100,000 just in that quarter given back to the county. So, um, I, I just hope that you remember this is a partnership between Cow Waste and the county. And there is something in it for the county and the constituents. Um, and lastly, I hope to get on the agenda to, um, have my recycle education teacher come and do a presentation of all the work we're doing in the schools. Um, I, I think it's beneficial for you guys to hear. Um, it's a really great program that we'd like to share. So I will reach back out and see if we can get on the agenda in the near future. So I will drop this off at public.
Thank you. Is there other public comment in the room? Jen or? Just walk up to the front. Very well. No further, please.
Of course, sir. One fraction.
No deal.
As the board. You have before you a, um, adoption to, um.
This is a consent agenda item. She's the one wanting to speak on.
Yes, thank you.
Wait one second. The next item's gonna be consent agenda and we'll allow public comment on that. So you don't have to go far. We'll be right there. Very well. Seeing no, we will move on to, uh, the consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-contro, con, non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or an interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Thank you. Board members, would you, anybody like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Go ahead.
Three members of the staff that would like to pull any items from the consent agenda? Are there any members of the public that would like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Would I remember?
I, I have the, the.
Which item number?
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm prepared in terms of this. I didn't. I don't remember two.
Very well. We'll pull that from the agenda and we'll, we'll allow comments when we bring back that agenda item formally. So don't go far. We're coming back to you. Any other members of the public? Very well. Are there any public comments on the consent agenda? Okay.
Hi, my name's Kent Labbert and I have the privilege of representing the county on the Comanche Regional Park Advisory Board. One of your items coming up is, uh, uh, part of an appeal process to East Bay Mud. We have the opportunity to meet with Mr. Toffenelli.
I'm sorry, are, are you speaking?
A letter to East Bay Mud. I don't know which, which item that is.
Sorry?
It's just.
Okay.
Public comment.
I believe it's item 10.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. So I wa, I wanted to thank the board for, uh, authoring a reasonably worded letter to East Bay Mud, my former employer. And, um, uh, there are two items that the, the letter requests and, and one is to revisit that 12 and a half percent rent increase, which would be awesome as far as the board goes. Uh, the second, and what the board, the advisory board feels is the most important part is to put us, uh, a cap on future rent increases. Six weeks from now is when the next, um, calculation will be from the federal government on the HUD FMR rates. And we want to make sure that we don't create another situation where there's a, a rate increase of 12 and a half percent or even more. Um, I was a part of that process to select that index and I can tell you, nobody expected the kind of volatility that we saw. And for future years, we just, we hope that the East Bay Mud Board and powers that be will respond to your appeal in a reasonable manner as well. If they don't, I want to remind you that there is one more step. Your appeal letter goes to the general manager. And, uh, lacking a good response from Mr. Chan, there's one more opportunity to appeal and that will be directly from your board to the East Bay Mud Board. And so I hope, uh, hopefully it doesn't come to that, but if it does, I hope we continue to get your support on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there public comment? Uh, on the items on the consent agenda? All right.
Good morning. Thank you for hearing us. Okay. On a comment of the rent increase, I walked from Mobile Home Park Saturday, up and down those hills. At 78 years old, you know what it's like. But, uh, the outcome was shocking to me. Really shocking to me. The stories that I heard of the elderly that can't afford this, that were already hurting and just added on to their hurt. Uh, then at the end of the month, after paying all the bills, $200 to $300 left to live on. And East Bay took $80 out of that. So if you could help us in any way, we would appreciate it very, very much. Because it was a shocking experience for me, I tell you for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other public comment on the consent agenda items? Please.
Thank you for hearing us today. I live at South Shore Home Park. I retired there. And to say that the increase was shocking, uh, isn't enough. In addition to that, with the fire insurance that we have to pay for living there, my insurance went from 400 to 1,400. And then have to pay an additional 12% in rent was just ridiculous on top of PG&E's increase. Yeah. And all the other increases that you get normally. We don't make that much on social security to cover any of that. So if you can help us in any way, anyway, I beg you. It's a great place to live. This is a great community. When I moved up here in 2018, I knew no one. And now I call bingo regularly at the Lions Club. And we, you know, we try to, try to volunteer for other organizations. Uh, Quilt of Honors, uh, I volunteer for. So this community has opened its arms to me, but I can't and I can't afford to live here if we keep getting these kinds of increases at all. So if you can do anything for us, please, we'd appreciate it. My next door neighbor can't afford to fix her house and I know she doesn't have air conditioning. So these are the kinds of folks that are also living there. I feel lucky that I can afford a little bit to pay for air conditioning to keep my place up. But some of these folks can. So I know they're really hurting. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for public comment on the consent agenda.
Leading.
Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the board. Uh, with the exception of item 12, do I have a motion to approve?
I think, I'm sorry to interrupt, Chair Garmendy. I think we should also treat number 10 as polled since we had public comment on it. And I think that will make the clerk's minutes a little bit cleaner. So just do a separate vote on that as well.
We'll pull number 10 as well. So is there a motion on, on the consent agenda excluding item 10 and 12?
So moved.
Doesn't.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Carries five zero. We'll go back to item number 10, which we just did the public comment on. Um, then clerk, can you read that out?
Item 10, action item, administrative office authorized the board chair to sign the attached letter per the request of Comanche Park Regional Advisory Board in support of their appeal to East Bay Municipal Utility District.
All right. Is there any further? We've already done public comment on this item. Is there, um, any additional comments that I would like to be made or from the board? Any questions?
Uh, just, I, you know, fully support this, uh, these days with anybody on a fixed income, the points are made and I can support that completely. I mean, it's a choice between be able to have a bucket of ice cream a month or not for some people at that point when prices go up. So.
I agree. Other comments from the board?
No, I, I want to thank Kemp for contacting me and bringing this to our attention and moving forward with this letter and we'll see where that goes from there. Please keep me informed on it. Um, and if we need to do something else, I'll certainly back that and bring you here and, and see what we can do. The other options that you said, if this doesn't do anything. So, um, I'm totally behind it, as you know. So I will move this item.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sir Roger Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. Thank you. Thanks, Ken. Thank you, guys. All right, move on to item number 12.
Item 12, action item, building. Adopt the recommendation of the administrative hearing board provided in AHB Resolution 2024 dash 01 to deny the appeal of the administrative citation and fine issued to Jeremy and Annette Smith-Covey in co-compliance case CE 230164 regarding the operation of four horse ranch at 2911 Patriot Way, Burson. Declare that a public nuisance exists based on the use of the parcel for activities that are either prohibited in the rural residential zone or require a conditional use permit. And authorize a division of code compliance to abate the nuisance resulting from the violations of code, county code and authorize a special assessment and lean to recover the county's costs of abating the nuisance against parcel APN 048009052.
Thank you. Doug, this is your item?
Yes, sir. Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official. Good morning, Chair members of the board. Uh, this item is essentially, uh, the, uh, agreement, uh, with the actions taken by the administrative hearing board. So the administrative hearing board on July 11th met on the appeal on this matter. Uh, your board has the copies of the evidence, the staff report and all documentation that came out of that hearing. Uh, subsequently, the hearing board did deny the appeal and make the recommendation to your board to deny said appeal. I will say that the, uh, just to clarify some of the information, uh, for the board to authorize a special assessment and lean is a preemptive authorization in case we do have to abate that there were any costs for violent abatement. And also any, any collection of any cost on the part of the county to have staff manage that abatement. Um, that is what we would be seeking the authorization to do should that happen. Uh, currently, the applicant has ceased all operations as a result of this hearing. And they are working with code compliance to, to demonstrate that there isn't any online presence. It would indicate that they're still operating this business while they seek getting a, a conditional use permit to legalize the business and restart it. So we, we are in process. They are working with us. Uh, the, uh, the appellate just wanted the opportunity to come to your board and, and make a last statement to see if you could change your mind. The options would be to, um, agree and deny the appeal or, uh, reverse that decision. Alternatively, you could choose to have a denovo hearing in which case we have a present. Alternatively, you could choose to have a de novo hearing, in which case we have a presentation prepared for you.
Thank you. Any questions for Doug from the board? Okay, uh, is your public comment? And that was your time.
So, Phil.
Thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry. I am a foster parent. I have an autistic child at home and I ran out without, to get her off to school one time without half of my stuff. And after watching such an emotional event today, I kind of moved um this sheriff of her things. One of my kids wants to be a cop, so that's exciting. Okay, um, I do, I wanted to say that we ceased all operations because it was brought to our attention ahead of any citation. It was brought to our attention that we were um not allowed to proceed with what we were doing. We had some stuff that we, so I am guilty of saying we are a ag business, not an ag operation. I am not aware, I am not a business person. I ride horses, I breed horses, I do um an ag operation and I didn't understand the difference in language. So when we came before the appeal board and we did all of this, I didn't, I'm, I'm trying to make everybody understand what we do and who we are. First, we are a foster family. Second, I am a member of a very, very large family. We have a lot of members in our family. I have a neighbor, I have two neighbors actually, who have decided to try to band together and get us out and it is stated. And I have a witness stating that it is an active thing to try to weaponize the county and get me removed from my property, presumably so they can take it over. Um, they have used blatant lies and other things to do that. The county is being used in this um, in this way because of the um complaint division of the county. I, in the past, have had people try to help me out with my business. So they've done things like set up a Yelp account I didn't even know existed and claim it as a business, which I didn't even know and put things in there to try to help me build a business that I wasn't trying to build. I'm out on trail, I'm out doing things um with my kids. We're working together to try to build these kids and my kids come in going, can you get me a vape? Can you get me drink? Can you do this? Can you do that? And they go to riding horses and they changed their lives and one of them wants to become a cop. And today I saw the possibility of her becoming a sheriff. Like, that's amazing and that is what my, my business is about, is taking these kids from two families over the head to a mom that stood here with a kid on her hip begging for my job money, ranch to continue. I'm pouring all of my money into doing this conditional use permit and I am working very hard on it. There are more, there's a compaction test I have to buy, there's a hundred other things that I have to do to get ready. So every cent counts.
Thank you. So other public comment on this item? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion or motion. We have a couple options. Um, move ahead or if there's three people who want to restart this whole process, we can do that as well. So what is the pleasure of the board?
This isn't moving forward on shutting the busi- uh business down or anything at this point. It's just uh moving, giving the, the uh person at Four Horse Ranch the opportunity to move forward in, in getting a conditional use permit for the process, Doug. And then if they don't fall through with that at that time, if there's any cost to the county in shutting any type of operation down, that's when you would facilitate these fines.
Essentially, essentially uh as it relates to the special assessment lien or abatement that you would be authorizing in addition, there's a, just, there's two distinctly different processes here. One of them is just ratifying the decision of the appeals board who found at the time of the citation, they were in violation. And therefore, here, here's the process we have to follow. That's part of what we're doing. The other part is you authorizing a component where if the use permit does not progress and they decide to run the business again, we have the opportunity to abate.
That's. Yeah, that's. That, that, the second part of the process is what my que- question was pertaining to. I, I just uh, you know, moving through the process, ratifying the decision possibly, can we separate the second part of the decision until that moves forward? Is that a possibility on, is the question? Could you bring it forward in two different things? So, you know, we could ratify it and then if the, if the conditional use permit does not go through and where we choose to enforce at that time, could you come forward for permission to? You, you get where I'm going with it, right?
Yes, good, good morning. My name is Bruno Vias. I'm with Peckner Law and I'm the county's outside counsel advising on this code enforcement case, advising code enforcement. And I, I think I could give a little context um with why that, that, that recommendation is not before you. And it's because normally you need to get a use permit and then engage in the activity, right? And here the problem we had is that the users were engaged in and the permit was not applied for. And code enforcement tried repeatedly, they put the entire code enforcement case on hold, allowing them to go through the use permit process. And then it was when we were not following through with that, that this all started again. It has taken several months to get here today. And so I think that is the difficulty, why we're recommending the authority to abate. And Mr. Oliver, I think, has, has explained, he's not going out there to do that now, but it's to have it in place so that we can continue to enforce the use permit process. And then if that doesn't work, he has that authority. Otherwise, it's months again and it's kind of a back and forth of, of, you know, they, they stop for a day and then code enforcement's back out and then it's happening again.
Again.
So it's that process and we can't get back to good weight.
So administrative process, they proceed through this is what we're.
The, the process would have to essentially restart with a new site, new notice of violation, new citation from, you know, day one over again.
All right. Other comments from the board? There's Toffenelli?
Uh, thank, thank you very much um for mentioning what you'd mentioned because this thing has been going on for a while and we did have some abatement done. And then when we turned around, it went right back to was advertising for things and horses going, more horses going. So it wasn't taken seriously, I don't think. I think that's at the point where I, right now, where it has to be taken serious that this is what you need to do. And as long as they stay moving forward, I, I don't have a problem with that. But I think we need something there in place for Doug to have in case he starts going back the way it did. So those are my comments.
All right. Supervisor, how many of you have comments?
I just had a quick question for Doug regarding the fines. I, I'm trying to remember, is, are there fines associated with this at the moment?
Yes, clear.
And how much is that?
Uh, I believe the fine court was uh ten thousand four hundred, not counted the uh, the case management fee. Thank you.
All right. Um, is there a motion to either have a de novo hearing or approve the adopt the recommendation of the administrative hearing board?
I move, I move to adopt the recommendation by.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Follendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero.
Beans.
All right. We'll move on to regular, do you guys want to take five minutes?
Okay.
We'll take five minutes, we can come back at ten o'clock.
Oh.
All right, welcome back to the Calvers County Board of Supervisors. We will move on to the regular agenda, item number twenty-eight. Madam Clerk?
Item twenty-eight, action item clerk of the Board of Supervisors, appointment of applicant to serve on the Fish and Game Commission. So uh, board. Uh, sorry, I can't speak right now. Uh, aboard, in front of the board, we have two applicants for the Fish and Game uh Commission and the Earl for the member-at-large, which would be filling the district one position. None of these positions are, members are of district one. They are actually all residents of district two. Um, but this would be again, just to fulfill the position to the end of the term of December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. Um, and at that time, we would be accepting applications again, um, hopefully from potentially district one. Um, if not available, then we would have a member-at-large.
Yeah.
So we have those four applicants, uh, Mitchell Garcia, Kenneth Snyder, Tillman Sherman and Jonathan Huddleston.
Supervisor Stopper, you are the excellent to this committee. Do you have any, anyone to add in?
Well, um, you know, I, as was always said, it's uh district one's position. Um, it's temporary until district one comes up with somebody. At that time, this, this position can be refilled if uh, if uh the district one supervisor so wants to support that. Um, you know, uh, I think that everybody has had the opportunity to look at them. Uh, moving forward, I mean, I can't really tell you who to choose, so. I, it's district one, it's district one, you know, and um, I'm sure you all reviewed the applications and have a feeling for some of those people within there. Uh, Mr. Toffenelli, I would give you the opportunity to.
Well, district two folks. What are your, what are your thoughts?
I recognize all four names that are on here and uh, I know a couple of them very well. Um, my, uh, it is a temporary thing for um ninety days. Um, and I appreciate these people, all four of them coming forward and putting their name in the hat beyond this commission. Um, it's been difficult uh for district one to find somebody. Um, so I, I, I'm looking at the names and um, they're all very well. Um. Got that. I, I'm, I'm going to go with Tillman. I think Tillman would do a good job, knowing him.
All right.
Sharon's husband.
I mean, I mean, before we move to, are there any other comments from the board?
King.
Would there, any public comment? Seeing that, is there any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Supervisor Toffenelli, do you want to turn that into a rec- into a motion?
Uh, I would move that uh Tillman Sherman would be appointed for the temporary position of district one in Fish and Game.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a first and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. Congratulations, Tillman. And thank you very much, Supervisor Toffenelli and Stopper. All right, we'll move on to item twenty-nine.
Item twenty-nine, agreement administrative office. One, receive a presentation on the status of the park's master plan. Two, authorize the board chair to execute amendment two to agreement one zero eight seven two-three-zero-one with Odell Engineering increasing the amount by twenty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars for a maximum amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and forty thousand. And three, authorize the county executive officer to execute amendments to the agreement, if any, as so long as doing so does not increase the not to exceed amount.
Well, Jamie, I believe this is your item.
Good morning, Chair and honorable members of the board. Jamie Andriola with the administration office. Today we have Karen Folsom and Chad Kennedy, who are representatives working on our park's master plan. Um, Karen has met with each of you as well as five focus groups and five community meetings. Um, and we received um a ton of feedback, hundreds of responses with our community outreach survey that we did for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And so today they're going to give you an update on some of that feedback that they received and the recommendation for the amendment to the contract. And then we'll be happy to answer any questions after.
Thank you. Take care. Welcome.
I apologize, I need just a quick moment. I don't believe I have this one on the, the PowerPoint um, for the presentation. So if I just need a quick moment, they can, you can start speaking if you like.
They did.
Okay, well, I'll just run down the agenda. And we are um here to present a summary of where we are so far.
Let's, let's just give ourselves two seconds.
Got it? Okay. Um, we're here to um share a summary of where we are so far, what we've heard from your community and um where we can go from here. Um, the overview will include um results from the community survey as, as well as results from our outreach meetings where we had the interactive boards.
You want to?
Go ahead.
You want?
There, you're still listening.
Stacy, do you need a second?
No, I'll bring it up while you're she's talking.
Okay. Um, and then uh, one thing we heard um that is key to this presentation is we heard very often that there were several other venues, uh, facilities, um, folks that, groups that manage parks or recreation. Parks and Recreation is a huge thing here in Calaveras County with this beautiful outdoor scenery as well as the families and children that are um playing all kinds of sports. So we were able to find out more through the outreach process of um how important it is to the community. And they have asked us to look at another, um, I believe it's twenty-four parks and school, and the schools where there are joint use districts uh that, so that those facilities can also be included in the park's master plan. So now that we are set, I will move forward. Um, we have the timeline that we'll go through, community feedback, which I mentioned, and um give you an opportunity for uh questions at the end. Um, the timeline changed a little bit because the site inventory, we have already visited some of these uh non-county owned parks, um, which we did while we were here for outreach. We, you know, took a, my team took a drive and, and saw what is really out there to see. The sites that uh five, now six county parks. I don't know if everybody and uh had heard, but uh, an additional park was found in district one um downtown. So instead of five county parks, there are three, there are six. Um, one of the things we have done so far with those six parks is uh mapping. This is GIS mapping that you see here. Uh, typically for uh park standards, we look at parks within a half mile to three quarters of a mile distance from residential homes, which is what you see on the left. Um, being a rural community, we reconsidered that and looked at some additional standards, national standards for rural communities. And that standard is fourteen miles in a car, which you see on the right. So you see these six parks um are accessible to many county residents um if they get in their car and drive for fourteen miles. Um, again, in the uh inventory assessment, we looked at the general plan. The goal is to provide a minimum of three acres per thousand residents per the general plan policy um to work with parks and recreation committee, community organizations and special districts to develop, to develop park and recreation facilities, pursue partnerships with other entities that make the most of limited funding. Now, these are all directly from the general plan. You can see here in the tables that we have um tabulated much of that. Um, and we have um a need of another ninety-six acres to meet the twenty-thirty um level of service goals. So here's a little snippet of community outreach. We had some very successful meetings, a lot of folks attended. Um, we did this supervisor interviews where we got to hear from you five, as well as we met with park and rec- recreation commissioners. Um, we had five community presentations and we met with five focus groups. We had five community presentations, and we met with five focus groups. So this is just a little bit of, a little snippet of what we gathered. These next few slides are about the survey itself. We have a summary that we prepared and shared with admin. The goal was to get three hundred and eighty-one completed surveys with this active community. We received four hundred and ninety-two, which was really wonderful. We heard a lot of exciting thoughts about county parks from the community. Let's see, we also found that they had many parks that were... Have been developed by community groups, where the county had no part in it. Some of these are very large, and these parks are well-used and provide for a recreation venue that the county doesn't provide. So they enhance the recreation opportunities within the county. But many of them are aging, and they require maintenance and improvement. Anything from a new bench to irrigation overhaul, some of the things we heard. One specific park is looking for lighting, so they can... Folks can attend during the evening. School properties will also provide recreational opportunities for the community. And we also heard that some of those schools had, you know, like a track that couldn't be used anymore because it needed maintenance, and they didn't have the funding. So that is where we heard a lot about these other venues and facilities. We had, this is a board that we actually had at the community outreach, just a few of the non-county-owned parks. And as we talked to the community, they often came up and said, "Well, this park isn't on there," or "That park isn't on there." So we, you know, we took lists, made notes, and handed that off to the county to work with them on looking at the opportunity of including those in this Park's Master Plan. Again, this is the map of the non-county parks. The county group, the county team has developed the inventory list that you see here. So what we intend to do, with your approval, is to continue research and analysis of these non-county-owned parks. We will include them in the mapping to show what level of service the county can achieve to meet the general plan policies. We will also look at the district-level analysis. So per district, we'll see what gaps we might have in each district. The inventory, again, has been provided by the county. And that helps us a lot to save time and continue with our work. The facility assessment and recommendations are not a part of this request. It's... That would take me reaching out to each of these parks, visiting each park and really assessing each bench and each picnic table, which we've done for the six county parks. So we wanted to keep it as a simple amount to be included in the Park's Master Plan. And this, adding this acreage to the level of service that the general plan has required will help a lot to meet those level-of-service standards. Recreation Resources, six point oh-one. This is a list of the parks that have been determined to be most beneficial to the county residents. There are many more. These are public parks and facilities that do not require to be a member in an HOA or to pay a fee to get in. These are all public parks. So those are the ones we are hoping to include in the Park's Master Plan. This is just a little wrap-up of the research and analysis and needs assessment that we've done so far. The first green items are, the first ten had the highest scores when we collated all the information we received at the meetings. So as you can see, skateboard, roller parks, soccer, dog parks, we heard a lot about dog parks. A little bit about pickleball, pump tracks, outdoor stage, but gathering spaces, most importantly. We heard from several senior citizens that the gathering spaces were key and really kept them going during COVID. And so that was something that we heard very loud and clear. So we took all this information, you can see some of the images of things that they had... The community has requested. Here are a few more. We'll take all of this into consideration when we make the recommendations in the final report. The report status at this time is that we've taken it as far as we can. We want, we would like to be able to add these non-county parks that are so important to the community to the contract, to, and the Park's Master Plan, so that we can really have a holistic view of the county parks and recreation for this planning document. And to do that with your approval, we'll just get back on track and move forward very quickly. We're close to being done, hopefully hitting that plan adoption at the end of this year. So with that, any questions?
Questions from the board? Supervisor Herbert?
I just wanted to emphasize pickleball. We get a lot of calls on pickleball. Everybody wants to play pickleball, so thank you.
Just want to clarify, this will take into account things like the high school swimming pool, Calveres High School, Toyon, those facilities that are used by the community but are not owned by the county.
Yes.
County Park, other things like that. Supervisor Stoppa?
With that said, the assessment would be crucial because of the aging infrastructure, you know? They say the community uses them. I tell you what, when I was on the soccer board, I got a lot of money put together, and I physically went out and worked on those fields for Calveres High School District, because they weren't safe. And the situation was, as we all know with the budget, was there's one maintenance person that couldn't touch all the points when it came to those fields. So this year, I already hear that, you know, with Calveres used soccer league, that they aren't able to use all the fields at Toyon. They're only able to use the middle one because they access it. And I'm not how much of this is true or not, but that said, the assessment on the fields, because of aging infrastructure, and what can actually be used at this time, what the cost is to bring it up to par, would be essential.
Are there any public comments on this? I see a member of our commission, Kate.
Good morning. Good morning, Karen. Kate Allen, I am the Parks and Recreation Commissioner for District Two. And just a couple of things I wanted to note. One was, the Parks and Recreation Commission wasn't aware that this presentation was gonna be made today. It would have been nice if our commission had known about it. I hope my other commissioners are watching online, but I don't know. I'm not sure. I mean, they can always check the agenda themselves, but it wasn't information that we were privy of. I'm glad I'm here today so that I could see the update. Number two, just for my district, I know that there's... We're talking about adding all of these non-county parks to the master plan, which I'm so happy about. I think it's very important to have a document that's usable, because otherwise, it's such a small percentage of the actual county. However, there was one that is missing from the list that I saw today. I know you said there were several missing, but I wanted to advocate for the River Flat Ballpark in District Two. The community has done a tremendous amount of volunteer work getting that ballpark up and usable, and it's getting a ton of use now from all ages in the community. And I think it deserves to be on the list if we are talking about adding to the scope of the Park's Master Plan. And I also hope that if we're talking about adding to the scope of the Park's Master Plan today and approving the funds needed for that, that we'll also include not only facilities and talk about facility improvements or future facilities, but programming. Again, I've been at this podium before, talking about the importance of recreational programming. And it's not just how many facilities we have in the county, county-owned or non-county-owned, but it's the type of programming that we have available to our residents that I think is really missing, and I hope can also be included in this Park's Master Plan, talking about the possibility of expanding the scope of county-managed recreational programming, like in the many counties surrounding us. So I hope that that can be included, and I'm very happy and hope the board supports expanding the master plan to include all these non-county-owned parks that are such a crucial part of our community. So thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize to the commission for giving you guys a earlier heads-up. Other pub... Bring it back to the board.
I mean, unless someone else is gonna speak, I just want to say, when it comes to programming, I mean, overall recreational activities and supporting them, rafting on our rivers, you know, off-road, different vehicles and things like that. I mean, there is so many people that are into, let's just say, chads races, you know? I would love to look at the opportunity to be able to provide, you know, maybe a fixed amount of permits across the county, so we can move forward in the future with providing those type of, you know, outdoor recreational activities. And it's a big part of our younger and older generation in the county, beyond the things already stated.
Supervisor Stoppa?
I just wanted to clarify, because in going to some of these meetings in the quarter, participating in some of the third-quarter meetings, the conversation came up. Because we're adding, just because we're adding the list of non-county facilities that just throw out the school district, for example, they do provide a lot. We aren't looking, I don't want the assumption that we're looking at this to also take on the financial burden from the county. We're looking at this as a partnership to see what's out there. So if there is an opportunity to seek out funding together, then those... That's where we would move forward. But just because we're not, just because we're adding them to this inventory list is not an indication that the county is taking full responsibility financially, correct? I just want to get it out there, because there seemed to be some miscommunication. There was some misunderstanding at some of these meetings, and we had to clarify them. And today, I wanted to re-clarify that.
That is correct. We would not be looking to take on full financial responsibility for those facilities. However, if there's an opportunity for partnering on grant funding or some other funding opportunity, we would certainly want to be able to partner to fully leverage both of our resources in order to make sure that we're providing those facilities and recreational opportunities as much as possible. Thank you.
I'd like to throw my endorsement in there. Ben, thank you for fixing those shields. My kids played on those, and they spent as much time avoiding the potholes as the other kids. Go for holes, thank you. And I also want to endorse taking a look at River Flat Baseball Diamond that the community's put a lot of work in on, that has been used by baseball teams throughout the district that are county-owned playing up there, which is really exciting for River. And the programming, I agree with Kate, that we have to take a look at that, and I know we've discussed that. And certainly, I was surprised in the committee meetings of the variety of programming opportunities that exist, from senior yoga and movement classes to kids' tap dancing, things that I wouldn't have generally thought of, but were requested by the committee and seem like wise ideas. And those are programming issues, how we get those things up and running for everybody. So if there's no other public comment or comments from the board, we have a... Authorizing, we have to... It's our motion to move this item twenty-nine.
I will move this item.
Move by Supervisor Stoppa, second by Supervisor Paul North. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Case five-zero.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you in a couple of months.
Thank you for...
Thank you, Kate, for the...
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate your input.
Yeah.
And Jack? Don't forget to let them know next time so we can get that input.
We'll do better, sorry, Kate. Let your commission know, we'll do better. Yes. All right, moving on to item thirty.
Item thirty, action item, administrative office. One, receive a presentation from the Thirty-Ninth Agricultural Association. Two, approve appropriations from the PG&E Settlement Fund to the Thirty-Ninth Agricultural Association of the amount of six hundred twenty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars. And three, make a public benefit finding, requires a forfeit vote.
Who is the staff presenting on this, or how are we doing this?
So I believe Lori is here to present on behalf of the fairgrounds. And this is a request for extension of the PG&E Settlement Fund deadline on some funding and a set aside for the fairgrounds.
Okay. I'll give you guys a second to set up. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Gueramendi and the board. I am Lori Janetti. I have the honor and privilege of being the CEO at the Thirty-Ninth District Agricultural Association or at the Calveres County Fairgrounds. And with me today, I have our board president, Gay Callan. And in the gallery, our board vice president, Mary Beth Ospital. And another one of our board members, Kathy Campbell. So thank you for having us today. And usually, I am here talking about the Calveres County Fair, which is fun, fun, fun. But not only are we a county fair that has lots of fun events, but fairgrounds all across the state are also catastrophic event centers. And that's what we serve to our community as in the time of need. I had hoped to start this presentation with a video, but that got pulled. So it is on our Facebook page, if you'd like to go and look at it. It just is our... It was during the pandemic and all the different aspects we had going, serving our community at the same time. So I think to get... I have a timeline, and I know you guys have seen it, but we kind of need to know where we've been to see where we're going. So, here we go. September ninth, two thousand fifteen, we were activated by animal services and cow fire. We had eight hundred animals, three hundred evacuees, a cow fire camp, National Guard. We also facilitated an animal clinic. We had a medical clinic, donations, meals for evacuees and volunteers. I think it's important to point out that there was no county staff, Red Cross staff, nobody was there. We were... We were just doing what needed to be done. Again, I said the Red Cross wasn't there, so we had some volunteers come in from out of the area to get everybody registered with the Red Cross. And then we had evacuees reside in our RV park for eighteen months because they didn't have a place to go. We had animals at the fairgrounds for seven months. And then we had a hundred tons of hay on the ground that was donated. That all had to get out somehow. So we facilitated that. We had, we delivered hay to everyone in the fire scar, had volunteers come and do that. And then we also took quite a bit up to cinders. They stored it, and then Alan distributed it through the winter to help people get through. Those are just some pictures, shee, all the things, so you can see all the feed there. That was just part of it, was interesting. It was a really tough time, but as we know about our community, when do we shine? We shine during these times that are really tough. And just what made this also challenging is myself, my board president. Most of our board was evacuated. So it was easy to live at the fairgrounds because we couldn't get to our houses. And then, so communication. We, two thousand sixteen-seventeen, Calveres County approached the fairgrounds to include damages to the fairgrounds and the expenses that we incurred. And they wanted to make it part of their litigation. So at that point, we started, we decided to go that direction. We did not file a separate claim, and we started working with Christine Lee, the county consultant, on the damage and the loss of revenue to the facility. Two thousand eighteen, you got, the county reached a settlement with PG&E. November, fairgrounds begins conversation. Uh, November, fairgrounds begins conversations with County CAO Tim Lutz regarding repairs to the facility. Uh, two thousand nineteen, uh, we met with Supervisor, uh, Gueramendi, uh, our, the late Bob Trincaro met with us and, um, Supervisor Gueramendi was really forthcoming and saying, okay, what's your number one priority? We really, the sewer, the sewer had failed during the but fire. Um, it was a big deal. The sewer was a big deal. And so then I, uh, we met with Supervisor Mills because he was our supervisor at the time to get his endorsement. Um, and then he suggested upgrades to the sewer and the facility. In April ninth, two thousand nineteen, um, the board of supervisors approves a million dollars to be allocated to the fairgrounds for the sewer upgrade and facilities. Um, that's in the minutes. That wasn't the the resolution. Is that different than the minutes? But that's in the minutes. Um, two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty, we began working with, uh, WGA Inc. and the county on plans for the sewer system upgrade. Our big objective with the sewer system was to get away from the regional water board, to fall under the county. Um, and that was one of our objectives. We had a few options. Um, we, we considered um, maybe hooking into the city's sewer system. There's just too many landowners between us and them. That wouldn't have worked. Um, and, um, and then, you know, redesigning the ponds we had or leach fields. And so, um, we decided on the leach field, uh, plan, thought that was the best option, um, and worked with, our engineer worked with the county. Um, there was some extensive engineering that needed to be done. April twenty twenty-one, we, um, were awarded a grant through SB five proposition sixty-eight bond measure, cycle two, which I had done in the prior years and then, oh, we got it. So, uh, the grant was for one million five hundred eighteen, six hundred and fifty dollars, fifty si- fifty says the grant funds would be released on a reimbursement schedule. Um, and then in June of that same year, we met with the county administrator Krista Von Lauda Supervisor Stopper, Matt Ospital and, uh, Michael Sullins from California Construction regarding the reimbursement process. The idea was to leverage those funds and so we could, um, get the project going. County agrees to release the funds. However, the fairgrounds must return the funds to the county to be to be placed back what we thought was the fair's fund. Um, twenty twenty-one, the project goes out to bid and construction begins. Twenty-two, twenty-three, the project endures several delays, including, I don't know if you guys knew this, but we had to blast. We hit rock, we had to have like an explosion with the fire marshal and all the good things. So it was kinda fun, but interesting. Um, so we had all kinds of delays, uh, the, we couldn't get septic tanks. Any of you in construction know how difficult it's been to get things. So our contractor had to go to Missouri to get septic tanks. Um, so phase one of that project, uh, was completed June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And in total, we, um, the fairgrounds returned six hundred and twenty-two thousand to the county, hundred thousand to the county. Um, September twenty-ninth, we met with the administrator, Supervisor Tofanelli, Supervisor Huberty. Um, and we had some assurances that the funds were still there and we were can, uh, you know, encouraged to submit additional invoices and perhaps purchase livestock panels for the barns. Um, because as you know, that's something that the county uses on a regular basis is our, our livestock barns. Um, we in, we submitted additional invoices related to the sewer project and the invoice for livestock panels. Then in March, the fairgrounds receives an email from Calveras County Administration saying that the but fire account closed on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. In April, um, we met again with Teresa. She's made a lot of time for us and with Martin and, um, we're, you know, assured that the fairground, uh, that the county will work with the fairgrounds. In May, we get an email. Uh, fairgrounds were emailed that we had reached our million dollars in funding. In June, because May I'm a little busy, in June, I responded and was trying to figure out how that we could have reached a million dollars when we returned six hundred thousand. That math just wasn't making sense to me. Um, so, um, and then the response was that those are two separate things. So it was difficult. Um, this is the arrow fire. You can see that's a little peacock that I was chasing. That's on top of that goat. Got away from me. The fairgrounds, um, we believe that in order to function to the best of our ability, to be the best we can for the county. Um, we need to finish phase two of the sewer project. We need to purchase generators for Mark Twain Hall, the Frogaterian Administrative Office. Um, we need to repair pavement, uh, to Frog, Chief Frogtown Road, uh, Gun Club Road, and the main parking lot and the interior roads. Um, oops, how do I go back? I missed this. I don't know how to go back. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, this is copy of some documentation we have about the famous Gun Club Road, saying that the state doesn't own it. Um, yeah, so that was in nineteen eighty-six. Um.
Sixty?
The eighty-six did in eighty-six, yeah. Uh, this is a picture of that, that entrance and that, um, when we had the National Guard there too. Uh, al- although, um, um, although, you know, our, our perception, what we thought, what we still believe is that uh, that those funds were being held by the county because they came to the county. And they had, the fairgrounds understood the count to be in held in trust for the betterment of the facility. Um, when we realized that that six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars was being redirected and I understand from Teresa that there, you know, that's the way it's set up and all those things, but there's, you know, there's budget transfers. You can do it differently. Um, it was kind of unsettling. It just didn't occur that that would be in the equation. Um, these are, uh, pictures of the wild horses that the county confiscated and we took care of for six months. Um, so that was a rodeo, to be sure. So basically, we re- you know, we respectfully asked that, that those funds be released back to us so we can improve our facilities, so we can do the best job we can, um, for the citizens of Calveras County. And this is you know, we're an unfunded state agency and I understand that it's state property. I, I get that, but, um, we're not serving Sacramento. We're serving you. We're serving the people of Calveras County and to the best of our ability. And uh, you know, sometimes that personal sacrifice, that's, that's what we do. And so, you know, there's, um, we're, we're very accessible. We're always just a phone call away and, um, we just really want our facility to be the best it can be in ti- in, in our community's time of need.
You wanna air?
I, I think the, the request for the funds to be released, um, is not. They can't hear me? Nope. The, the request for the funds to be released for the fairgrounds is not for just the fair. Um, i- if any of you have been out to the fairgrounds, it's, it's aged, um, antiquated at best. Um, the sewer project is not complete, uh, with the delays as Lori had indicated and all of that. It's, it's obviously something that will be a continual repair for us. Um, as far as
each.
disasters and generators and, and things that, that come up expense-wise. It's also one of the reasons that we're putting that.
The things that are unnecessary.
Um, we're here to serve the community. We have done so diligently, professionally and in a timely manner, you know, always been there for whatever disaster, whether it's flooding or fire, you know, we're there. So we're requesting, you know, not begging, but requesting, um, that you allocate the funds, you know, that we so need.
Very well. I, questions, is there in the presentation? So, questions, questions from the board, Supervisor Stopper?
Uh, you know, uh, as always, you've been a great, great partners with the county. Uh, we appreciate all the good work you've done during disasters, uh, and everything else. Um, I went back and reviewed the, the resolution, uh, from back in the day and, you know, sometimes the discussion in minutes isn't necessarily what's in the resolution. It's ideas floating, you know? So minutes don't reflect what, what a contract is necessarily. That being said, the PG&E funds were always meant for disaster. We, we made that decision in two thousand nineteen when we received them. And, and, uh, yeah, you know, to work towards resilience and, and fu- future disasters, cause we've all, we all know it's not if, it's when. Um, unfortunately. So, and it was very clear in the resolution that it was for, for a specific use of a certain amount of time. And, uh, at that time, so it's not be so much that, you know, it's the shell game or anything else. More so, I would love to see your idea, you know, I see generators, I see roads and everything. And it's not just release the six hundred and twenty-two straight down the road. From my perspective, I would always love to see the cost on those and how that money's gonna apply to the, those res- that resiliency and those type of disaster upgrades. Um, so that I can, I can validate a decision on what, what that money's going towards in the future. And I, I could definitely, um, at that point, consider uh, how we could spend the money towards the resiliency and disaster money with the fairgrounds.
Any comments from the board, Supervisor Paul?
Uh, I would be with Supervisor Stopper, um, I think, you know, just recently the fire down in Copper, you know, and setting up and responding to that, uh, it's not a matter of why I'm in point here. And it ain't the, it is, it does create, uh, a service that the county, um, in most counties we can't facilitate. And, uh, I would think of the fund can go to this, but I would love to do a breakout because it's not just being held accountable to the public, but then it's clear to staff. The authority, the delegation of authority of one to side with staff. And it makes it very clear. Uh, and I think that's just been one of the key issues that has come up with the way the delegation of authorities from the board to staff. And if we can get it to the, I specifically we can, I feel like the, um, this whole triangle will be solved and good life, um, with you, for everybody who's got.
Comments from the board?
All right. Go ahead.
Why don't you start it? Why?
It's Amanda's district.
Oh, uh, I'm usually, yeah. I'll take it. Uh, thank you for the work that you do. I, I see the, the need for this and I think it'd be proactive is so much better than being reactive. Uh, I agree with my counterparts here, but I'd like to be able to see it down. And I think, uh, Supervisor Paul, you've had a very good idea to get rid of this sort of triangle of where we've been. And I thank you for putting up with me because I've been trying to learn all of this too and the history and it's been really important. But I'd also like to point out that, I mean, this is, uh, it is being proactive, but also for the fair itself, which is the ten amount thing that we do in this county. Uh, forty-five thousand people is what I counted going to last year. These services are needed. And, uh, I think it's, uh, it's hugely important that we do it.
Supervisor. Thank you, sure. I, I agree with my counterparts, sure. And, um, I'm looking at what was presented here to us that, um, it looks like another two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to complete the sewer. Uh, do you have a timeframe on that by any chance when you're in the floor?
It, it depends on weather, supplies, but yeah. I mean, some of it, we're, some of it we're completing right now.
Yeah. And, and I, I agree that you, you guys, whenever there's an emergency, you guys step right up to the plate. You, you, no questions asked, immediately take it off. And I understand that is, that does take part of, of, um, I think, uh, wear and tear on the facility themselves. Um, and be able to have that, um, especially the payment and, and everything, um, that we have that, uh, the next emergency or future emergencies come up, that we have that facility ready to go and there's not anything slapping there. So I, I support what's, what's been said, I'm in a situation, sure.
I'll, I'll throw my, my line in there also, you know, three of us were on the board when we made this decision. So we all remember pretty closely and I, and I believe it was our intent not to be, to help fix specific problems. Putting a fire truck in a fire house, fixing the sewer, these are specific projects. I think what, what we were cautious about at the time, I think we were still cautious, is that doesn't become, we don't operate in funds. An ongoing maintenance of things. We didn't wanna get in there. So we really tried to be very specific. Uh, I echo, uh, what Supervisor Stopper presented. I mean, uh, things like, uh, from the arrow fire, we know that power went out and you needed to have generators. We also know that from when we last met, there were some electrical problems that resulted from that. So we would need more data on how many generators, how they fit. Do we have the right ones there so we don't blow out the electricity again? So I think if there was a fully baked deal in front of us, bids, all those things that need to go into it. I, I believe that I'm, I'm giving the person's port to be interested in talking about those things. Is that correct?
Yeah, no, uh, but, but one thing to think about when it comes to putting that type of thing together and planning it, there's a cost. So, you know, working towards that, I, I mean, a little seed money from the county on a sound resilience plan might be an idea we should think about.
It's a pleasure, board.
I, I'm just throwing that in there, you know? It's, yeah, there's a cost to, uh, coming up with those plans and everything, especially when it comes to electrical engineering.
Let's do this. Let's, uh, let's have some public comment on this and then we'll bring it back and try to make some decisions here. Is there any public comment on this kind of? Here?
I just wanna lend my, uh, support for building a plan or whatever. I think it's great to use the funds. Uh, there's a, there's some key points, especially the proactive and the reactive and building resiliency. They're our biggest logistical partner. Uh, as I try to quickly, I'll be arrow fire, um, and the more logistical nightmares you can take off our plate, the better that we can of protect life, health and safety for our community. So I just wanna let support wherever, uh, I think it's great to use the funds. That's it. Thank you.
Kathy, may I grab?
Hey, guys, I'm Todd, Vice President, Calveras County Fair. I just wanna thank you guys for giving us the opportunity. This has been a long time coming and just to hear you guys say that you support willing to look into supporting this, I appreciate that so much. I think, um, one of the means we had with Teresa and Gueramendi was, I just asked, what is the partnership here? What does it look like? And you, you both told me that we are an integral part of this county and that we have this partnership. And so I just, I wanna extend that to the rest of the board and say that yes, that is the partnership we feel that we have. And I really, really encourage and hope that you will, if, if we provide exactly what you need, I hope that you will consider releasing those funds on whatever that looks like. We will get you that information that you need to make the best decision. As, uh, Supervisor Paul North said, I know that you have to be accountable to the public. You have to be accountable to many things, but and I one hundred percent agree. I wanna be transparent about that. And so however we can work with you, we are here to work with you as well. Thank you.
The public comment. I've all seen none. I'll bring it back to the board. Um, what is the pleasure of this point? Somebody wanna start off?
I feel like Supervisor Stopper's idea of, of the, uh, plan.
All right, so.
Well, I think you did. I under- interpreted it. I see money.
Well, I think you did, I interpreted it, I see money to get them started and what they need to do, like how the engineer to come out and get the, get the, what that electrical need really going to be. That's what I could, not necessarily.
I think your whole thing is the same thing.
Yes.
And I said it differently, so.
But yes, I.
Supervisor Stoppa?
I agree. I think see money, to get a plan, to see the total costs of it, and then come back with the full plan in favor of it.
Yeah, I'd agree, because the wish list here totals up to a hundred and seventy-five, seventy thousand dollars. We don't have. I think it's important for this board and the community to recognize, these are dollars that can go to anything. Go to staff, it could go to parks. This is a choice we are making to invest in our partnership with the, with the. So it's not, there's not an entitlement to establish. Nobody's, nobody has ownership of this, but the board and the community we represent. So Madam CEO, you have something like that?
I do. I would, just for clarification, because we've had some confusion, I think the fairgrounds thought that our office had more authority over these funds than we do, because this is definitely a board decision. There's a couple of ways we could do this. These funds now reside in an emergency fund. We could leave them there and the fairgrounds could, we could designate an amount for them to get a plan together and then bring projects back to your board. Or we could move the funds into a special revenue fund that is earmarked for the fairgrounds. There are a number of ways that we could do this. I just want clarification so that I know what our role is and what our authority is moving forward with this funding.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Oh, yeah. With, 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 the world is full, and things do change. And I really hear a strong intent to follow through with this, but you know, the next earthquake could put that San Andres fall right in the middle of fairgrounds for all I know. So for now, it's my opinion, I would even make a motion to the ads, keep it in the emergency fund at this time with the intent to give them the planning money to move forward on it. And then once that planning money is out and we see costs on specific things, we make a educated decision as a board on what to move forward on with the money another time.
So would you propose that we, would you be proposing that we have them say how much money they present to the CEO of plans and how much money they need to play? To knock this stuff back, get the engineer work done, which we're good.
Yeah, because that's.
And I should bring that back, and then bring that back to the board?
Yes.
So there's a two-step here, I think, is what Supervisor Stoppa is proposing. Step one is to come back and tell the CEO, we need five thousand dollars to do this planning and this electrical work. And subsequent to that, come back in the case of electricity and say, here's what the, here's what the real package is. This is the real gig, this is the real timeline. And then be with the board.
That's, that's us being accountable to the public's funds with real, real-time numbers and plans on how it's going to go forward. Because as we know, you know, just throwing a number up there on some generators is, is not a real thing, especially with the electrical component to it, electrical engineering, you know. That's it. It takes a solid engineering plan to move forward.
Counsel, you look like you want to say something.
No, I'm just trying, I just want to make sure, clarify. So then today, then all the board's action is, is to give that direction as opposed to taking formal action to move any funds today. Is that?
So we had the authorization for them to move funds, I believe, in as something that they could take action on. I'm hearing that they want to leave the funds where they are and get a more solid plan together and then have the fairgrounds bring projects back that have been fully vetted for consideration for funding.
I've worked for everybody. Supervisor Stoppa, we're giving direction rather than taking a.
That's my proposal on direction. That's my proposal on direction at this time, you know, if it's the appetite of the board. If anybody else has any ideas, I'm open. It's not a clear, it's not a formal motion at this time. It's discussion.
Who's in support of Supervisor Stoppa's discussion item, direction?
I am.
I am.
Supervisor Stoppa?
I am as well.
I think, I think that counsel said it best, so I'm going to stick with her wording for my motion.
Okay, so we've given direction.
I have a question. I just, I just want clarification. So to come back with the cost of getting a plan?
Yes.
And then come back with the plan?
Yes, and then, and then.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I got that right.
It's two-step.
Yeah.
We have to be, we have to be transparent for everybody.
And with that type of thing, moving forward on any of those installations or everything, you're going to have to have that engineering done anyway.
Yeah.
So, you know, you might as well get us paid for the engineering.
Alright.
Alright, thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. No, thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
We'll figure this out together. Thank you. Alright, item thirty-one.
Item thirty-one, resolution, human resources. Adopt a resolution approving, one, a new salary schedule for classification within the Calaveras County Management Unit and the Calaveras County Supervisors Unit. Two, the salary schedule implementation process as outlined, and three, and to describe changes in the position control list, including reclassifications, elimination of positions, and updated job descriptions.
Alright, Judy?
We're the Chair, Gary Mendy, members of the board, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and West Director. And as we have previously discussed, we are implementing the classification and compensation study. And as we are coming to tentative agreements with bargaining units, we are bringing it forward to your board. And so we have come to a tentative agreement with the Calaveras Management Unit and the Supervisory Unit. And so we are bringing the recommended salary schedule, the new salary schedule, which is going from five steps to seven. We are asking for approval of the implementation process. And then also the changes to the position control list and updated job descriptions as listed in the agenda item. And we are also, with some of these changes, we are also recommending those that are affected by a difference in salary change that would negatively impact the employee, we're asking to Y-rate them. So they do not see a reduction in salary. Can I answer any questions?
Questions from the board? Seeing none, are there any questions, any comments from the public? Kathy?
Good.
Good morning, Chair, Gary Mendy, and all the board. Kathy Galino, your Economic Development Director. So I have a couple of comments, being the employee that is going to be Y-rated. And a couple of comments on actually reviewing the analysis that was done on by the consultant. I understand the need and the importance of doing the copy class study, especially for fellow coworkers, colleagues. It's very important, and I'm very thankful that the board took this step forward. One of the recommendations that I made to the consultant when they reviewed my position and my department was that it should be called Economic Development and exclude the Community Development piece. Reason being, there's some confusion when you say Economic and Community Development. It implies that that position oversees land use departments, such as Planning, Building Department. And obviously, I work closely with them, but I don't oversee them. I think a fair representation of the duties that I perform is Economic Development. Of course, it includes our community. Of course, it includes our Parks and Recreation, broadband and all kinds of wonderful things. So I would like your consideration of changing that name, since we're here to make those changes. I am concerned that you are considering downgrading and reclassifying the position from a director to a manager. I understand the perception that as a director with no staff, it can be challenging. I also believe that in a time of economic challenge, that the most important place that you can put your support is in Economic Development, right? By increasing tax revenues, creating new jobs, also improving incomes and the betterment of our communities. I've built strong relationships with a lot of our organizations, our leaderships. And it's taken me time to build those relationships, and I do so as a peer-to-peer, as a director-to-director. I obviously would like to keep that opportunity. The reclassification also limits the opportunity to grow the department. As you know, I've been trying over the last several years to grow the department to include things like housing, broadband, implementation. I know we have our IT, and we actually have a presentation here right after this. But also to include other things, such as Parks and Recreation, housing and so forth. I'm checking time. You didn't time me?
I did. I thought you could shake.
There's no red light, Chappie, run.
Okay. When conducting the independent audit of my job duties and looking and comparing to other counties and communities, I remember some Economic Development Directors are actually assistant or deputy county administrative officers or administrative executives. And that my salary does fall kind of in the middle of the pack. I know that Calaveras, at the time that I, that there was the recruitment for my position, was really looking for a great candidate. And I'm thankful that you guys offered me the position. You were here at the time, and two of the supervisors were here at the time, and I do appreciate that. I want to talk a little bit about my workload. I know a little bit about my department core functions. A lot of what I do, I don't know that you see behind the scenes, the work that I do with one-on-one with our business communities, with our developers, not just trying to retain the businesses we have and help them grow, but also attracting new things to come to our community that will fit into our future, the strategic plan that the board has developed. I'm working on streamlining the permitting process, working with our business license folks, with our building and planning folks, and trying to make that process as seamless and as simple for our business community. Facilitating inter-agency meetings with utility providers, developers, all of our land use departments. Our fire districts, our utility providers, promoting the Calaveras County Recycling Market Development Zone, trying to move things out of the landfill and into a productive reuse through a manufacturing process, serving several community organizations and providing needed resources, even so much as to helping some of our nonprofits learn how to write grants. I liaise on for Parks and Recreation Commission, which you know, as well as represent Calaveras County on the Central Sierra Economic Development District and the Meadow Low Job Training Board. And then, of course, there's broadband, which we're going to talk about shortly. So I just want you to know the importance of this position to me. I would like to change the name of the department. I understand, looking forward, that changing the title to a manager is something that is before you today. I'd like to see it kept as a director, at least until maybe my separation of service it someday. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Paul, you guys, we'll get the timer on.
Sorry.
My future. Other public comment on this item? Is there any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Very well, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion or an action, or a motion. Anybody have anything they want to add? Supervisor Stoppa?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions, and Kathy brings up a point, and I was going to ask. Is the recommendation from our consultants to change from director to manager?
Yes, when the consultant was doing the review of the positions and then reviewing the similar positions in our other counties, this was the recommendation that they brought back, both with looking at the information from the focus group, which she met with Kathy, and we had another person. And then also with the survey that was turned in of their job analysis, this was the recommendation that was brought back.
The CEO, do you support this recommendation?
So I don't, I don't want to discount the work that Kathy does. She does an amazing job for our county. She's very proactive. And she's fantastic at, you know, making sure that she's involved in all things pro-business. I think the consultant's recommendation is based on just, you know, basic data. And it's probably an appropriate recommendation moving forward. But if the board so chooses to leave the position at a director level until we have a vacancy in that position and we revisit it at that time, I don't have a strong feeling either way. We're just recommending what the consultant recommended because they looked at all the data and trying to make sure that our positions are aligned with what they're actually doing. But again, that's.
Well, she was hired as director, and she was hired when Jack and I was on the board. And to change that now without, you know, she's still here, I don't think that's a real positive thing to me. I, I, she was hired in this position that was director at that time. If she was leaving and we were hiring somebody new, then we can change it appropriately to me, to manager, but just to change it to manager, because I don't think it's absolutely fair. I think that she's been doing a great job. She struggled at first in which everybody gets, because we didn't have one. And she's built a lot of great relationships, as she said, and I know, throughout the county. And she's there, she's almost at every function, she's continually there. So I, I would be a fair around, although the rest of the board is just leaving her as director, because that's what she was hired for.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Director, manager, either way, I hear what Gary has to say, I hear what this is said by Kathy. You know, years ago, when I first got elected, it's just, you know, you made the point, we don't see a lot of the work you do. So when I came here, it was like, what she do, you know, because it's up there, you don't really see it. But, you know, over the last few years, especially working with Kathy through Central Sierra Economic Development District, Mola Job Training, it's not just partnerships inside Calaveras County, it's partnerships all the way from the state level, it's partnerships in other counties. It has been crucial, and I've utilized her through our GPA, JPAs, and so have they, and it has benefited Calaveras County. Extremely benefited Calaveras County from my perspective that I've seen it. So I can back up what she's had to say, and something that I've learned, you know. Wasn't the viewpoint I had coming in, and she, and she made, she made it happen, right? I do disagree about the Economic Development period. Because a lot of things that stayed out there are part of community development, not just economic. So, and also, if we take that community development off, then that would align with something else that would have to be Y-rated even more, because then you wouldn't have the responsibilities that other places aren't doing. So then, yeah, overall would be worthless. And I'm already saying that you do do community development, Kathy, so. Alright? So I, I concur with Mr. Toffenel here. I, I don't, you know, the title, director or manager, does that have any difference? It doesn't have any difference to you either way, but does it make any difference in how you proceed in managing the county?
It wouldn't make a difference to me in how I would proceed to manage the county.
Supervisor, I'm ready.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that I've worked with Kathy, and I've seen her behind the scenes. I'm lucky enough to work with her since I started working in this county on other projects and what have you. Kathy, I thought you were the one that fought for community to be in there to begin with. If I remember correctly, you actually wanted to add community to the title originally, and I think that, like Supervisor Stoppa said, you should continue to keep it. I agree that you should remain as a director. I also think it doesn't necessarily make that much of a difference here in the county, but also to your counterparts. If I, I think that that would demote you in the eyes of your counterparts in other counties as well. It allows you, the director title allows you a lot more leverage. It allows you, the director title allows you a lot more leverage, I guess is what I want to say. So I'm in favor. Let's keep it up.
All right. Um, does somebody want to shift this into a motion? Supervisor Stoppner?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I do want to note one thing. Um, if that's the board's direction, it is going to require, the bargaining unit has already agreed to the title change. That's what's been signed by the bargaining unit. Um, so it will require a change to that. Um, you know, I think that if that's the board's, um, if that's the board's preference, then, and the board wants to delegate authority to, uh, Ms. Hawkins and or Ms. Hitchcock to go back to the bargaining unit to make that change, you know, I obviously couldn't say as I sit here whether they're going to have any issue with that or not. I just want to point out that that is going to require a small alteration to this agreement.
And we would also have to figure out where the salary lines up with, with this change.
So Ms. Edwards, could they adopt it as it is with a direction for us to go back to the bargaining unit on this one classification? Um, I hate to hold up everybody else for one classification. That's my concern.
I concur. Um, I think, I'm trying to, sorry, I'm trying to think through the logistics on the fly here. I think that, um, I think that the, like I said, if the board wants to take this action and give, um, and delegate authority to staff to go back to the bargaining unit, um. They can do that. My concern is, um, just trying to think through worst case scenario, if there's, if there's not agreement, um, we'd, we'd have to come back.
Yeah.
Um.
You know, I, I.
I'm sorry. I have a legal question that I don't want to really ask here.
You want to take a five-minute break?
Yeah, and just ask counsel real quick because Gary and I are discussing something. It's kind of crucial.
We're going to take five minutes to consult with counsel.
I just don't want to step on my own foot.
All right, welcome back. Supervisor Stoppner, did you get your questions answered?
Yes, yes, sir. And, and, um, at this time, uh, I would like to, if, if it's the will of the board, make a motion to move forward as it's put into, uh, the resolution now um, for the management unit and the supervisory unit as was voted on to move forward. And I, I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there anything else to, want to add to the motion? Are we good? Supervisor Fonger? All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Stoppner, a second by Supervisor Stoppner, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carrie's five, zero.
Thank you. And I also want to thank the members of the management and supervisory bargaining team for the work that they also did on this.
Thank you. Moving on to item thirty-two. Barbara, thank you for being so patient.
Item thirty-two, informational item, economic and community development. Receive a project update presentation from economic and community development and informational technology regarding broadband activities and opportunities in Calaveras County.
Thank you.
This one's.
Do you, do you guys need a second setup or are you good?
I have it on the computer. I can bring it up for you in just one moment.
I'm assuming that's a compactor working back there.
More. Oh. And. She thinks I'm spitting out. You don't say if you want to hear that, Barbara. That's why I start humming while I'm driving. I was like.
All right, Barbara, Kathy, you ready? All right, you got the call.
Good morning, Chair Garmandi, Alpa Board. Today with you, with me, with us is Barbara Hayes, uh, from RCRC and also Golden State Connect Authority. They're our partner that we are working on with broadband on many things from the LADA grant to FFA, to loan loss reserve and many things for getting broadband deployed in Calaveras County. As you know, we've looked at having priority areas. We had that presentation before the board. And, uh, we're getting there. I was hoping to have some really exciting news from CPUC, but hopefully we will be in the next round of approvals for our federal funding account. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Ms. Barbara Hayes and she will give us the update.
Come on, moderate.
Thanks, Kathy. Thank you, Board, for taking the time. I know I'm all that stands between you and lunch. So I'll be, I'll be brief and, and happy to answer any questions as we follow. So this is, the first part of this may sound familiar, but just as a quick refresher, Golden State Connect Authority, of course, is a joint powers authority that was formed at the strategic correction of the Rural County Representatives of California, or RCRC, Board of Directors back in December of twenty-twenty-one. And since inception, your very own supervisor and, and chair here serves as chair of the Golden State Connect Authority Board of Directors. The Board of Directors is represented by one elected supervisor from each of the forty counties that you see there on the map highlighted in blue. Um, all forty RCRC member counties have the opportunity to join the Joint Powers Authority that is Golden State Connect Authority and all forty opted in. Calaveras, of course, among them. Um, the program of work there, I, I won't read it to you, but, um, we've, uh, we're, we're working our way through. We've kind of checked off item number one there, the strategic plans and, and we're looking forward, um, to deploying our open access municipal broadband network. And then we're going to talk about that in just a second. But really it all started in July of twenty-twenty-one with the passage of SB one fifty-six. And I want to touch on three of the four programs that were established under SB one fifty-six. Kathy mentioned the LADA program or Local Agency Technical Assistance Program. There's also the federal fund account, also known as the FFA account, a whole world of acronyms. And then finally I'll touch on where we are with the loan loss reserve account, um, because there was some drama there during the budget crisis. Um, so starting with, um, uh, the LADA. And, um, if you look at, at this map here, this shows you in blue and then gold represents cities, but blue represents the counties. Gray is just representative of the Golden State Connect Authority counties writ large. Um, so all the counties in blue and the cities in gold are those that we worked with through the Local Agency Technical Assistance Grant Process. And these were, just again, to refresh, these were five hundred thousand dollar grants that each of those jurisdictions applied for and received from the CPUC. Um, it with the distinct purpose of developing network designs, low-level network designs for the initial forty miles of what would be, um, a, a network, so to speak, in, um, in each of those jurisdictions. And in each of those cases, we've been working very closely with local representatives to identify those areas of need, being led by data, um, uh, leaning toward unserved and underserved addresses. Um, and here in Calaveras County, your local team, uh, was ably led by, of course, Kathy and by Stan Moore, who I understand is, is zooming in here. Um, but, uh, between Stan and Kathy, they've brought, um, they flexed that team when needed and brought in, uh, uh, leadership from the county. Um, and then on the day-to-day, uh, it's really been Kathy and Stan that I've been working with very closely. So what you see here again in blue and gold are those that we took from the LADA, uh, network design grants and moved to, um, and through submitting applications. The applications were Golden State Connect Authority applications on behalf of identified projects within each of those blue counties and gold cities. This is a program, the FFA Last Mile Program that was in, on the previous slide you saw, uh, allocated with two billion dollars under SB one fifty-six. Those applications were due September twenty-ninth of last year. The CPUC went through an objection and response period that ended on December twentieth. So for the last seven months now, um, the CPUC has been reviewing and rating those applications. So what it looks like for Calaveras County, um, as of last September twenty-ninth, um, when the CPUC received four hundred and eighty-four applications totaling four point six billion dollars in requested project areas, these four projects were those that landed for Calaveras County. Um, Calaveras has just over thirty million, um, in its allocated funds to fund projects for broadband deployment. Um, Golden State Connect Authority, you see their GSCA, another acronym. Um, that is our application, again, working with Kathy and Stan and leadership from the county. We identified specific project areas, uh, that we were led to by the, the data. Again, the unserved and underserved addresses within the county. There were also three other applications that were submitted. And you see them there, Murray Creek by Comcast Cable, Calaveras Two by AT&amp;T. And then there was a, uh, an application by AT&amp;T that crossed the Amador and Calaveras County line. So, um, it, it straddles both counties. Um, what Kathy was alluding to as far as having good news to share is back on June twenty-eighth, the CPUC did the first round of announcements, um, uh, as far as awards. So they, they're, again, they're reviewing these applications. Um, they're calling, um, and have called me on, uh, to, for clarifying questions and insight and information into our application. In fact, specifically related to Calaveras, I think about three weeks ago, I got my first question. Um, turned to Kathy and Stan, uh, to, to validate our response back. And, um, and we filed that response back really quickly, within, uh, forty-eight hours, which is our goal is to keep things moving. Um, relative to FFA, this is, this will give you an idea. So Calaveras has not been awarded anything as of yet, but this is what it will look like as far as the, the approval process. So day one starts with, uh, a resolution that's issued, issued by the CPUC. Um, and it comes in the form of a staff recommendation. And it comes out thirty days in advance of action by the commission to award that, um, that project as designed, to turn it down or to have it changed, to send it back to the drawing board for staff. Not likely that that would happen. It'll either be an approval or a denial. But there is that thirty-day posting of the staff recommendation. During that thirty days, there's an objection and response period. Um, so, uh, for those projects that GSCA has received, and I'll, I'll talk about that in just a moment, we have filed, uh, uh, I'm sorry, it's not an objection response, it's a comment reply, big difference. I'm, I apologize. It's a comment and reply on the staff recommendation. That enters whatever is submitted into the public record. The CPUC voting members then take that into account. And on day thirty or a subsequent date, they then take it up at a voting meeting. This has been happening every two weeks, um, since June twenty-eighth. And, um, every two weeks, the CPUC recommends roughly a hundred million dollars worth of projects. They've gone through four reporting or recommendation cycles, uh, as of last Thursday and have recommended, uh, four hundred and thirty-six million dollars worth of projects. The, the rest of the timeline there is just a procedural one as far as getting the agreement and executing the agreement. So this was a slide that was submitted, um, for your, to be included in your board packets prior to last Thursday. So there, there is some added information here that I'll touch on. But relative to Golden State Connect Authority, in the first three rounds, as represented here on this chart, um, Golden State Connect Authority has received four awards, award recommendations. The only award that we have received, as again officially voted upon by the CPUC commissioners, is Imperial County. And you can see there the dates for the commission meetings at which those, um, uh, those projects will be heard. I will comment on those that are in resolution, uh, T dash one seven eight three-three, the one starting with Alpine County and falling below it there. They were to be heard at the August first meeting, just by way of timing. But there was a mix-up in the docket office at the CPUC. So those handful of projects have been pushed to the August twenty-second meeting. And the commission will take action at that meeting for all of those that fall, um, uh, on the remainder of this chart. Last Thursday, the commission came out with recommendations totaling ninety-one million dollars worth of projects in addition to what you see here on the screen. Golden State Connect Authority was not included in any of those recommendations, but three of our member counties were Mendocino, San Benito and Sutter. So I think we're up to fifteen, I should have counted, I'm just looking at it and, and taking a wild guess. But we're up to about fifteen member counties that have received awards. So the nice thing is the CPC is doing a really nice job of actually focusing on rural in advance of urban. There's some urban awards that have been made, but really the preponderance of the awards to date have been in rural California, which is nice. So let me switch now to loan loss reserve. Um, loan loss reserve, as I mentioned, there was a little drama, so, um, in the last couple of months. So loan loss reserve under SB one fifty-six back in July of twenty-twenty-one was allocated seven hundred and fifty million dollars. This is a program that was envisioned and created under SB one fifty-six that local governments, tribes and nonprofits could apply for and use to securitize credit instruments. So bond offerings or loans used to, uh, deploy fiber networks. Uh, Golden State Connect Authority had every intention of utilizing, I won't say the whole seven hundred and fifty, but we did file applications back in, in April for four hundred and thirty-four million of that seven hundred and fifty million. In fact, there were thirty-eight applications submitted. Ours were thirty-seven of those, one for each of our FFA projects. Um, in May, when the governor released his revised budget, that loan loss reserve program was zeroed out, effectively zeroed out. Um, in the, in the ensuing timeframe between, um, May fourteenth, when the revised budget was issued and when the budget trailer bill was passed at the end of June, we were successful, due in large part to the, with the assistance of our board members who did tremendous amounts of outreach, walking hallways, writing letters, making phone calls. We were able to restore fifty million into that program, which we will take as an enormous win with the backdrop of the budget prices being what it is. And the win is that now the program has a line item in the budget. It, it exists in the budget. That's always easier to plus up later if the program exists, um, in, in a formative stage. So we were, again, lucky enough to get fifty million restored. Last Thursday or Friday, um, whatever day the eighth was, um, the CPUC issued another resolution, actually truing up this new fifty million dollar allocation with the Budget Act. Because the other part that the Budget Act required was that this fifty million be encumbered by December thirty-first of this year. So that resolution is out. They'll go through that comment reply period that I mentioned earlier, uh, as they do under Begley Keen at the CPUC. And then that motion, that resolution will be acted upon, um, by the, uh, commission thirty days hence. So it'll be acted upon at the September twelfth, um, commission meeting coming up. Then there'll be another, um, and, and the other thing that that, um, well, the, then the next step in the loan loss reserve process will probably come around November timeframe, again, given the thirty-day advance notice period, at which point the CPUC will issue another resolution that will say that all the applications that were received and are pending for the loan loss reserve program, reminding you that there were thirty-eight submitted, thirty-seven of them were ours, are approved and available for funding. And then what will happen is, what, what we're doing in that process, buying time for more federal fund account awards, the actual grant dollars to build the infrastructure will be made so that we can come back to the CPUC before their commission meeting in December last of the year and tell them which projects we would like to have, um, the fifty million, uh, used against. So what's the highest and best use relative to the projects that GSCA has received approval for? So there's a process lined up now that will take us through, um, reconciliation with the Budget Act and in compliance with the fifty million that exists rel- relative to the seven hundred and fifty million that was there at the beginning. So a lot of, lot of moving pieces, as you can imagine, um, behind the scenes. This is the, the last side I had and it's just a cursory side more for. This is the the last side I had, and it's just a a cursory side, more for public consumption than all of you, because you all know this. But, um, of course, we're, uh, Rural County Representatives of California is is what we call the mothership. It's the one, um, that creates the affiliate entities under which we do our work, Golden State Connect Authority, being one of the six affiliate entities we have and the one under which broadband falls. But we do have another affiliate entity called Golden State Finance Authority, um, that we can also use. It's another joint powers authority. And it, as you can see there in the second bullet at the bottom, infrastructure is is an allowable use under Golden State Finance Authority. So if there are additional opportunities, um, relative to infrastructure above and beyond broadband, I just wanted to put that out there, that this is another mechanism by which we have to to assist in pulling down grant dollars and making infrastructure work. And it was, in fact, um, I took a lot of notes during the Fairgrounds presentation, Community Resilience Center. So that's something I'm going to take back to the team and see if we can help you with that one on. But that concludes, I, we don't have any breaking news. That's the breaking news. Sadly, um, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? I will, I would like to make a comment. Um, Barbara, I've I've worked here for three years on this project. And from start to now, you put together one point three billion dollars of shovel-ready projects, which is remarkable. I think that what you and your team have created, uh, through through our affiliates is really a model for how government can work well. Uh, we're using private companies, we're leveraging resources we have. And we, as a board, are going to be shareholders in what will be the largest broadband, municipally owned broadband system in the United States, which is really, really cool. And I I'm really excited and I'm, you know, you have a remarkable ability to juggle more projects at one time than anybody I've ever worked with. And you always do it with a smile, and you never forget about the little things along the way and taking care of Calaveras. So I really want to thank you for keeping your eyes on the horizon and making sure your feet aren't stumbling as you're going. Uh, really very remarkable, and I, it's been a pleasure, uh, to chair your board over the last three years.
Thank you.
You've made, uh, everybody look good, and hopefully when you break ground, you'll send me an invitation. I'm going to miss it. Supervisor Stopper?
Uh, just to reiterate what Mr. Geramendi said, just I don't see under anyone else, the rural counties getting the type of service put together uh, that that, uh, you have facilitated for everyone. It's it's phenomenal and it's, we're we're just blessed to ha- have have you at your point. But then I must say that, you know, at our accounting level, without the work that Kathy and Stan put in and helping you get the information you need and actually doing the groundwork for that, that we wouldn't be where we're at today moving forward. So I think that's, that's part of the whole, and so thank you both.
I I also want to add, just to your Golden State Finance Authority point, uh, I want to thank that board as well for really helping us get our reimbursement for part of our Prop sixty-eight grants. I know in the case of McAllen, the veterans, um, Memorial District, you put forward the hundred and seventy thousand dollars so they could do the work and they get reimbursed, because they did not have the cash flow to do that. As a real, it makes a difference to our communities. It's it's, it's a small banking piece that makes a lot of things happen. And I know we're not alone in being grateful for those opportunities.
Thank you.
And I also got to say, not just Stan and Kathy, but our GIS and everyone else throughout the county, because, you know, it start starts somewhere at the top sometimes, somewhere at the bottom, but it takes everyone from the top to the bottom and in between. So thank you.
I I concur. Any public comments on this item? Stan, I know you're online. Do you want to?
Thank you, Jack. Um, just a, uh, a a call out to all of the work that Barbara has done and continues to do for us to help move this along. And and thanks for the continuing support from the board. We're making good progress. We're looking forward to, uh, to getting the information from the CPUC and and having that recommendation to further request. So thank you for asking.
Thank you. So the public comments, online?
We have no online public comment.
On the board? Barbara, thank you very, very much for making the drive up from Sacramento today. This is very exciting.
Thank you.
And, um, thanks to RCRC and all their affiliates.
You're very welcome. And if I could take,
Please.
indulge me for just a moment, and I say this at every, the end of every board meeting, but now I get to say it with all of you here, is we could not do this without you. I mean, this is not me doing anything. It's me facilitating really what you need done, um, to a higher level. So the county team here and the county staff has just been amazing. Um, so our board first, county county staff, our local government staff second, but without the team, it couldn't be done. So thank you, everyone.
And thank you very much to all of our team, Dawson. You guys have done a really great job, and I appreciate it on all aspects of it. Anything else on the side? Barbara, thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
We'll move on to supervisors' announcements.
In compliance with Government Code five three two three two point three D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out.
Supervisor Hubbard?
Chair, uh, on the thirty-first of last month, I attended the CBT A meeting, on the seventh of this month, the EPOC meeting. Our meeting for area twelve and the eighth was pushed to next month. If I could just say something, sure, the Olympics were amazing, and what it really made me think about was how much goes right in our day that we don't actually acknowledge, because I think we as supervisors deal with a lot of negative. And I have to say, that moment of of, um, swearing in our new sheriff really meant something to me. It was really amazing, and I want to hold on to that. Thank you.
Awesome. Supervisor Fulner?
Uh, last week, we had calls in CTA and after CTA, uh, meeting. Um, we, we, it was reported out that, um, a hundred and sixteen students had utilized, um, transit to get to school um, for Calaveras High. And, um, we were optimistic to see that these numbers will go up, and so, um, it is, it is working. That, um, collaboration is seeing some success. Um, and then just a reminder to my fellow board members, um, starting this week, if you're an alternate on any of my committees, I've made sure that, um, staff had made sure to include you on email, so you get the agendas.
Thank you, Amanda. No, we'll see whether we see you at a future meetings very soon. Congratulations. Carrie?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I attended the COTB meeting and the CTA meeting, um, last Wednesday night um, with Amanda, and, um, I have a Mountain County EMS agency meeting on Monday at, uh, ten AM.
Thank you. Supervisor Stopper?
Th- Thursday, I have a Mothero Job Training Agency meeting in the morning, and then, uh, special meeting of CES EDD along with the, uh, workforce at the same time, uh, and there's a lot of good things in the works. Uh, you know, California jobs first and everything's moving forward. Um, and I don't think any of my actions have cost the county recently, so we're doing good.
Very good. Uh, Chair, nothing to report. Madam CEO? Madam Counsel? Very well, we will go into, return to closed session, but this public meeting is adjourned. Thank you.